Okay. Alright, so the first order of business tonight is going to review the minutes to the the meeting for ten twenty-four.
I read them. I make a motion to approve the minutes for ten twenty-four, twenty-two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, well. Let's disclose this. That's done. Alright, we're gonna. Is Mr. Lapham here? Why don't you bring up those eighty-one Ps that we have?
Doing good.
Why don't we do twenty-seven Pleasant first?
I may go, don't go anywhere. So we are. Which one are you grading, Nate?
Both. The number of progress. It progresses in this direction.
Right, right.
Get the front edge lot with the building stuff.
All on the window.
Way over. That's a couple thousand square feet over there. Fifty. Side of the road.
Alright.
Yeah, there's a new lot, so that's.
Looks good.
Good. He does, Jimmy does. Hey Barry, I don't know if you want to look at that. That's the eighty-one P for twenty-seven. Now whereabouts is it?
It's near a sound stream. It's the broad curve that goes around. There's a little wetland down there. Yeah.
Let's knock a couple more last now.
Well, it's not Peter's. It's Steve's state.
Yeah.
His state of land. Peter on this one.
Just a couple more.
The estate.
You should wrap it. I think this is supposed to be outside.
Somebody must need money.
Oh, yeah.
Now, who's your?
It's gonna be Bill, John, Barry. Who he's on.
It's gonna be signing. A long night. So, yeah, we are. You know, you'll need a.
It's the correct name, James. I checked it.
What? You'll need a motion.
You need a motion.
Yeah, we need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Seven A and B.
Twenty-seven A and B. Pleasant Street.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
I guess, that's what you said.
Is that you, Jack?
Yeah. Alright. Jimmy wraps it up.
That's it.
Oh, yeah, I gotta sign that. One minute.
I could hear the laugh. That's the last.
Yeah, I don't know why it won't let us. Turn off here. I'm gonna kick you out just to make that go away.
You know, yeah. Yeah. I'm gonna be here a while. Now I am. Oh, that was fine. You showed up perfectly on time. Anybody else to sign this? Oh, Damon's on the meeting now. Good. We don't hear.
So, four, four and A so soon?
Yep. Maybe you can shed some light on this?
Sure. This is actually a revision of one that we signed. Yeah, we got the line over here plus the end of so. We negotiated by. Not consider the building part. It's just something that basically just wanted to add. So it's.
That's why. Care window. So they want their cases. When they ask students.
That's what I want, yeah.
Cause they wanna keep it. They haven't agreed with it down.
You need to share everything on your screen specifically.
I'll do my screen. I don't.
I'm very. But I've been inside your side. Oh, who else?
Oh, it is.
Yeah, we need both.
Need to hear it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Jimmy and Barry, sorry. Oh, first.
I got the plan up there for the public.
Yeah, that's the, that's the first one.
Oh, you're on the second one.
Guys, yeah, I might just want to make some explaining. Cause this just conveyance of land that's not available in it.
Right. Online.
The four names again. There it is. Then you go, Bill. We'll teach. Art musical teacher. Oh, yeah.
You're right, I'm.
Bill? Does anybody even want to explain to me what's going on? This one. This one's just conveying some property. These people have purchased this property. It's not a buildable lot, actually. This is just at some point in time. I think they've been agreement of ten years. Okay. You can still use that property to hang and stuff. Eventually it'll convey to this lot here. So it's just being segmented on. In eighty-one P, for those of you unfamiliar, approval is not required. All we need to do is that it dimensionally meets the, the the rules and regulations of the town zoning regulations.
You don't have an option.
Yeah, we don't have an option. So, like, if it meets the guidelines, it's gotta be approved. Alright, that takes care of those.
You didn't have to wait all.
Alright, I'll say. We're actually finished up Saturday. Alright, so the couple things. We have a continuation of public hearing on thirty-five, thirty-seven Hastings Street. A couple things I want to read into. Read into fact here. Number one, I received a email today from the engineers. You got in the project. And they're memorializing the statement they made during the October twenty-third meeting in regards to three of the, three of the proposed two-bedroom, single-family homes on the above reference project, the application, will be designated as affordable housing unit eligible for inclusion in the subsidized housing index that would, that the town has to maintain with the state. What we try to achieve is a ten percent affordable housing. Mendon currently is nowhere close to that, but we're trying to work in that direction. Them constituting three of the units within that development meets to eleven percent of the project. So it adheres to the state requirement. And basically what it, the terminology for that would be a friendly forty B instead of an unfriendly forty B, which is much easier to, to deal with than a typical forty B project. So with that being said. With that being said. I had the next letter I have them. We requested peer reviews on the entire project. Peer reviews that when we hire engineers and so forth to represent the town to review their engineers' work. That is still being done, has not been completed. So at this time, the they've requested a continuance. So we'll be continuing this till the next meeting. And hopefully the peer reviews will be completed by then. But it's being delayed basically from what we requested. And big peer reviews are coming in, but we haven't received them all yet.
Bill, can I?
Sure, go ahead.
Just an excellent, further explanation. We received the peer reviews for environmental, for fiscal impacts, for engineering, and for.
Traffic and geology.
They, the applicant then responded to all those peer reviews. I gave them back to our four consultants and we've received the environmental back, but we haven't received the other three. I did talk to Jeff Walsh and to the MDM, the traffic engineer, and they'll have those easily by the fourteenth. I haven't talked to the fiscal person. She hasn't gotten back to me yet.
Okay. Well, hopefully we'll have those by the next meeting so we can continue this on forward. But at this point in time, due to, we can't move forward till we have those. They request the continuance and all I need is a motion to grant that.
Meeting date?
Fourteenth.
December twelfth.
December twelve.
Make a motion to continue thirty-five, thirty-seven Hastings Street, December twelfth, seven PM.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I cannot be here for that meeting.
I also cannot be here.
I have a four-hour continuing mandatory.
Then we can't continue it to the fourteenth. We gotta move it forward. Yep. What's the next meeting after the fourteenth?
January. And I don't have the new, yes, I don't. I'm sorry. January ninth. Twenty-three.
So I'll continue that to January ninth.
Second.
Any further discussion? Everybody up there? Nobody up there? Alright, then we will take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Damon, you on?
Didn't hear him.
CDT.
Damon's not on tonight. Okay, so that passes. So we will move on to the next public hearing. And the next public hearing is where I'm gonna continue a public hearing from Mendon Extractor LLC at forty-seven Milford and Phoenix Remedies LLC at forty-seven Milford Street. Are you present? Come on in.
You know Denise Tice is also online.
Ah, okay. I just wanted, who's responsible for the, the building? Down there.
Who owns the building?
Who, yeah.
Canapenter Partners owns the real estate.
Alright, we've got two issues.
Okay.
First violation of the regulation is you've got a freestanding sign out in front of the building. The marijuana ordinance regulation states you can't have a freestanding sign in front of a retail cannabis facility. So that has to come down.
We do on our other locations.
Not in Mendon, you know.
Mendon doesn't allow it specifically.
Mendon doesn't allow.
Okay.
Okay.
I believe you went through the permitting process for that.
I already talked to the building inspector. He wasn't aware. You must have followed the sign by law.
Yeah.
It's actually right in the marijuana by law.
Okay.
So it, and you can review it and you'll see.
I believe you. Okay.
Secondly. You were supposed to bring a lighting plan back to the board when, when it was prepared. We require downlighting and it's gotta maintain inside the property.
Yeah, we are aware of that. We're getting shields to put on those lights that are currently out there.
Cause I drove by the other night and I'm like, whoa.
We actually got a call from a neighbor and we said we will put shields on those and take care of it. No problem at all.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that's already in progress. Not being done, but there's quotes being done for those people to do it.
That's fine. As long as I know you're working on it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Alright, so. Where were we? Bring me back to.
So we were at a peer review for potential odor.
Yeah.
From the facility.
Yeah, that's.
And we are hoping to get approval based on adhering to the conditions set forth in the peer review.
Yeah, so I talked to Denise many times today and since the last meeting. Mike Lannan from PetroTech is not.
Tech Environment.
Tech Environment. Your peer reviewer. He's well-known in the Commonwealth. He sent his review today and according to Denise that you were in agreement to comply with his requests.
Yeah, we have little concern there's gonna be any odor or sound from that facility. That would, it would be far less than what comes from a fast food facility that was located in town. We have no concerns whatsoever being able to adhere to whatever he recommends, so.
Yeah, difference is some people like the smell of fast food.
I know, I understand. I was speaking specifically to the, the fan noise he was referencing in there. It would be, it'll be a fraction of what comes out of a Burger King or McDonald's exhaust fan, the sound that comes from this facility.
Well, as long as you're willing to comply with what peer reviewer.
Yeah, and there are basically four things. He wants an order control design system. A system designed. He wants that information. Order control design assumptions, how you're coming to that conclusion. And a management plan, how you're gonna handle your assumptions. And he would also like a sound study as to any impacts it would have on the neighborhood properties.
Absolutely.
Did you receive this?
Like four o'clock today.
Okay. Alright, I just wanted to make sure.
About one minute after me.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. I have no concerns with any of those requirements or being able to hear them.
Could look conditionate, Mr. Chair. Yeah, what we'll do is I'm, I'm just thinking, I mean, we reviewed the, the plan the last time. I think our only concern was, you know, was, was going to be the odor. So it looks like that they're willing to address that issue, working with the peer reviewer. We'll make conditional on what the peer reviewer requests. I can't make conditional on anything substantive because he hasn't given us.
Sure, no problem at all.
But as soon as he provides that, he'll be asked to address that. So.
Yes.
So I need a motion for us to approve the project forward.
Which one?
Oh, yes, okay.
Simultaneously.
Yeah, I was gonna say we'll do them.
I don't know.
Incarably.
Are they both the same company? There's different names.
Different names, same location.
Okay. Got it, John?
Yeah, good. So we gotta approve now or you wanna talk about the next?
Discussing the, the second one.
Want to approve both of them now?
All the discussions been heard.
I think all the discussions been heard on both of them.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve. Yeah, the second facility is just a delivery operation.
Delivery operation, right.
It's basically a mobile dispensary. Like we went through that last time.
Yep. Mr. Chair, you may wanna close the hearing or get some public comment.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, usually what I do is after the second, I answer the discussion. But I need the motion first.
You need a motion first. I think that discussion first.
No, motion first, discussion.
I'll make a motion for Mendon Extractors and Phoenix Remedies for forty-seven Milford Street for approval with conditions that they follow Petra Environmental's recommendations.
Discussion. Anybody have any questions? Nope. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No Damon.
No Damon, tight. We'll have to bring them up to speed.
Okay.
Alright, so that takes care of those.
Thank you very much.
I'll draft the decision. The chair will sign it and we'll go to the court. You'll get a copy.
Thank you, gentlemen. And, and please take care of the, the lighting and the sign issue.
Take care of this.
If you have any questions.
In the meantime, so no one's getting bothered at night.
Okay.
Should be off by now. Just the building lights are on.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you have any questions, I need to reach me. Just contact Gail. She'll give you my correcting.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna close it right now.
Make a motion.
Close the public hearing for forty-seven Milford Street for Mendon Extractor and Phoenix Remedies.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay. We have the, open the public hearing for the site plan. Nope, it's, it's not. It's this one. Okay. Alright, I'll read into the record, the article that was placed in the Milford Daily News. In accordance with MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section eleven, notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Monday, November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two at seven PM in person in the Mendon Town Hall at twenty Main Street, Mendon, Massachusetts. To consider a site plan review, special permits made by Blue Water Property Group, LLC of a hundred Front Street, Suite twelve twenty-five West on Shahawkin, PA. For twenty-three Cape Road, owner of the property is Gold Medalist LLC of two thirty-four West Street, Milford, Mass. Plans are designed by DePree Engineering, one oh five Eastern Avenue, Suite two hundred, Dedham, Massachusetts. Okay, those were published in the Daily News on eleven eleven and eleven eighteen. Before we proceed with public hearing. I'll advise that I run my public hearings pretty close to the board. We any questions that, that you have directing to me? If I don't have an answer, I will get you an answer. There'll be no crosstalk in between. When, put your hand up if you have a question. If, please state your name and your address when called upon. And with that. Come on up.
I agree, Chair.
Alright. Yeah, I know, I'm just kinda. Okay, thank you. Making notes. Okay.
Floor is ours.
Floor is yours.
Well, good evening, Chairman Ebersino and fellow planning board members. My name is Connor Downey from Blue Water Property Group LLC. The applicant for the project proposed at twenty-three Cape Road. Tonight, you'll hear a summary of all major project attributes from myself as a representative of the developer, our civil engineer, DePree Engineering, our architect of record, M and H Architects, our acoustical engineer, Ostergard Acoustical Associates, and our traffic engineer, VAI. Blue Water is currently under contract to acquire twenty-one point three acres of land located in Mendon Highway Business District. We've applied for a site plan special permit application for an approximately two hundred and five thousand square foot storage warehouse building with associated improvements. The use proposed is permitted within the highway business district and requires a special permit only for the size of the building. Upon completion, the building will feature approximately two hundred and five thousand, four hundred and forty-five square feet of total space with area office to suit the tenant's needs. Thirty-five foot building height to provide for thirty-two foot clear height within the building, thirty-four dock high loading doors and two drive-in doors. Two hundred and six car parking stalls, four of which would be for electric vehicles, twenty trailer parking stalls and a twelve foot high sound barrier to the west of the site for additional screening and buffering. Blue Water is proposing the project would be built on spec, speculative basis, which means that we don't have a tenant lined up for the building yet. However, the design, which we'll walk you through, does allow for flexibility of up to two tenants, providing the opportunity to, to appeal to a wide variety of users. We've also made some progress with other town and state agencies to move the project along in anticipation for the public hearing process. We have received our order of resource area delineation from the Conservation Commission. We will also be in front of them for a notice of intent. We met with both the Mendon and Hopedale Water Commissions to secure a fire water connection to the building for fire water purposes. We're currently permitting wells through the DEP for domestic water service to the building. We've submitted an environmental notification form to the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act Office, or MEPA, which is currently under review and comment period. And through that process, we've held a number of meetings with the necessary agents, state agencies, DOT and DEP through that process. Upon completion, the project would generate significant tax revenue for the town as well as temporary construction jobs and permanent employment opportunities. And working with the Mendon's Assessor's Office, we've estimated that net new tax revenue in a, in a fully built condition would total approximately four hundred thousand, four hundred thousand dollars per year. And while a tenant or tenants for this facility have not yet been identified, from our experience in building these types of facilities, we expect that construction jobs would be around seventy. And then once the building was fully operating and at least. we expect that construction jobs would be around seventy, uh and then once the building was fully operating and at least up, there'd be about a hundred jobs. Um, these figures worth noting, our current estimates may vary based on the final construction costs of the of the project uh and also who the end users are. Um, so unless the board has any questions for me at this point, I'd like to pass it to um Kevin Demers of DePree Engineering, who'll give an overview of the siblings.
Go to the next slide. Thank you, Connor, uh Kevin Demers from DePree Engineering. Uh, in reviewing the existing conditions to start with, the parcel I D is fourteen dash one one four dash twenty three. Uh, the site area is approximately twenty one point three acres. The frontage for the site is via Witten Street, which is a forty five foot private right of way. Uh, currently, the site is mainly cleared with low level vegetative cover. Uh, there's gravel and pavement from the existing Witten Street and Terry Lane segments of roadway. Uh, the topography for the site varies from the easternmost portion at approximately elevation two forty, uh two eighty to the western end at approximately elevation two ten. There's an existing drainage network which serving uh serves these roadways. And the outfall for this drainage network is within a forty five foot drainage and utility easement at wetland flags C ten and C eleven on the far western portion of the site. Uh, as far as the wetlands in general, there are there are wetland complexes to the north central and south central uh offsite area. And also the complex uh containing a stream to the western end of the site. There were uh there are many rounds of soil evaluations conducted as the soils are pretty challenging as far as determining the uh composition. We coordinate closely with the Board of Health Agent conducting these uh evaluations. And it varied considerably between silty soils and sandy soils, depending on which portion of the site we were uh we were on. And for these, for the purposes of being conservative, uh our drainage we propose uses a conservative flow rate of one point zero two inches per hour, which correlates to sandy loam. Uh, next slide, thanks. Uh, the proposed site layout uh consists of a warehouse building of approximately two hundred and five thousand square feet as well as a reconfiguration of the end of Witten Street to a uh terminal cul-de-sac. This cul-de-sac will be uh will be fairly flat in accordance with the town regulations. Uh, for the parking area, the passenger car parking area, we we use the lowest uh lowest amount of spaces uh uh by zone, which is two hundred and six. There will be thirty one truck loading spaces behind the uh the building with twenty trailer storage spaces provided uh to the front of the building near the terminal cul-de-sac. Uh, there will be a heavy duty loop road at thirty feet width around uh both the north and south sides of the building from the terminal cul-de-sac and a truck court located behind the building. Uh, the truck court was sized to the smallest extent that we could uh given the uh truck turning radius and uh and length requirements for the trucks to to load. Uh, the parking areas within the passenger uh passenger lot are proposed to be, yes.
Uh, they can't hear you.
There's a number of us here that are interested in what you're saying. Can't hear a thing you're saying.
Okay, I I'll try to speak up, thank you.
Is that on?
This doesn't normally work, I can try and turn it on, but it makes feedback.
Now that don't work.
Okay, I'll I'll try, I'll try to speak louder, oh, I think uh I think it's working now, thank you. Uh, for the passenger truck, uh passenger car parking area, we're proposing aisles at twenty four foot width with spaces at nine feet by eighteen feet. Uh, you can go to the next slide. As far as the grading design, we have the the eastern portion of the site as uh as uh as I described in the existing conditions, has an elevation of approximately two eighty. We will slope down the existing uh existing Witten Street to that terminal cul-de-sac. There will be a flat slope across the cul-de-sac of uh of less than two percent. And then the truck uh truck loops will have a slope of between three and five percent uh going down downslope either direction to the truck court area. The building is proposed at elevation uh two forty two for a first floor. And the truck court will be four feet below this at an elevation of two thirty eight. This will provide a uh mainly a fill situation for for the building itself as well as the truck court in back and a cut situation for the front passenger car parking area. The area, the volumes will uh will be slightly on a on an import uh import basis. And we're proposing a a small amount of cut in the northeast area of the site near the domestic well field uh in order to gain some some volume and reduce the amount of import needed. Uh, the grades from the proposed development from the paved areas will vary between two to one and three to one uh in most surrounding areas with the exception of uh approximately half of the rear uh truck court where we'll have a retaining wall to make upgrade uh to existing grade without uh without grading into the existing wetland area. Uh, next slide. As far as the drainage, the drainage upgrading of the project along Witten Street will be diverted to the uh to the south of the building to an open air swale. Uh, prior to discharge into the swale, there will be further treatment via a downstream defender just to improve water quality over the over existing conditions for the frontage area of the site. The remainder of the drainage will be captured via drainage network uh routed to the uh to the north side, north and south sides of the building. And we'll have final discharge in an underground infiltration area located in the truck court. Uh, as as discussed under existing conditions, we chose infiltration rate of one point zero two inches per hour uh to infiltrate the underground infiltration system. So therefore, the underground infiltration system will handle stormwater quality and quantity. There will be an outfall from this underground infiltration system to the west, and what we did was we pulled back the existing outfall approximately one hundred feet eastward, therefore allowing for a a riprap channel between uh between the edge of the the development and the existing head wall, which will help dissipate energy before reaching the current existing head wall area. And stormwater flow rates and volume will be reduced for all storms between the two and hundred year storm events. And the total uh total suspended solids removed from the project will be approximately ninety seven percent. The water utilities consist of an existing water main, which will be uh which will be diverted around the south side of the building uh from the existing uh terminal cul-de-sac over to the west of the truck courts where it will tie back into the existing main. And this will be for the purpose of a a fire service will be tapped from this diverted line and will be run through a fire storage tank and pump and then service the building directly as well as provide a looped fire line to uh to accommodate hydrants around all sides of the building. The domestic water service will be provided via field of four domestic water wells in the northeast portion of the site. These will be connected directly with a domestic service to the building in its own one well radius of a hundred feet, has been provided with no additional uh non-well site uses proposed for that location. The sewer utility will be uh sewer service to the um to the building will be accomplished with a sewage disposal system located in the most suitable area in the southeast portion of the site, just south of the terminal uh cul-de-sac off of Witten. Due to uh due to gravity accommodations for the proposed uh building service, we propose a uh a septic tank, a pre-treatment tank and a pump tank to the northwest corner of the building. And once uh once the effluent from the pump uh is pumped out of the uh the tank, it will travel via sewer force main along the north of the building and through the uh proposed parking area to the final S D S location. And the design flow, uh approximate design flow will be uh a hundred and forty employees times fifteen gallons per day for a total of twenty one hundred gallons per day. Uh, this is uh being coordinated with the Board of Health for uh for S D S review. Um, briefly touching upon the landscaping, uh from the terminus of the Witten Street uh cul-de-sac, we'll have some street trees in the uh along the truck loop uh to the north and south of the passenger car parking area as well as uh some trees within the island uh separating the terminus from the car parking area. Uh, there will be some uh shrub and ground cover vegetation provided within the uh passenger car islands. Uh, and then briefly for lighting, uh R A B lighting, we coordinate with with them to provide fixtures uh for the truck loop uh aisles as well as the passenger car areas and the uh wall packs for the buildings. Uh, and they um a- as per our direction, they did provide a plan, a photometrics plan showing no uh no light trespassing over the property lines and to the adjacent wetlands.
It's all down lighting?
Excuse me?
It's all down lighting?
Correct, yes. Uh, next slide.
Uh, I'll be, at some point in time, we'll get community uh discussion. Uh, one other question, are you using low impact development um guidelines for the for the property?
Excuse me?
Are you using the our low impact development guidelines for the property?
Correct, we were uh we've provided a a large island to the uh to the passenger parking area. We brought the existing drainage to a an open air swale to the south of the of the building, um and just briefly, due to the uh due to the cuts proposed in the front parking area, uh we aren't able to infiltrate in this location. Uh, but we're providing uh infiltration to all to the rear of the building where we have the the sufficient fill to do so. Okay. Next slide. Uh, the building height calculations, um. What we what we did for to provide a a building height calculation to show that uh this building meets the requirement is is we uh divided the the perimeter of the building into segments, which was, you know, approximately uh fifteen hundred fifty feet uh totally surrounding the building. Uh, we chose a station zero at the southwest corner of the building and went counterclockwise around the truck court, uh north side, east side, and back along the south side. Uh, at each change, abrupt change in grade or along uh along one particular side, uh we took the average grade of that uh of that side times the distance and summed the products of those uh of those calculations. Uh, following uh following the product of those uh of those average elevations, we divided by the total perimeter of the building and arrived at a number of approximately uh two seventy seven point eight four. And this was roughly point two feet below the uh highest point of the roof beams, which will be two seventy seven point six three. Um, and therefore, we we provide a uh maximum building height of below thirty five feet. And with that, I can hand it off to the uh architect, Justin.
Excuse me. Just a little pitch them flat.
Uh, Ju- Justin can probably provide more information on the uh on the rooftop.
Sure. Thank you, Kevin. Hello, everybody. Uh, my name is Justin Bruce. I am a principal at M and H Architects in charge of our corporate and industrial projects. Um, a bachelor of architecture from Drew University in two thousand and eleven. I've been practicing architecture for eleven years. Um, a licensed architect in the state of Massachusetts in good standing as well as fifteen other states. Our firm has completed over a hundred million square feet of this uh building type uh nationally. And uh this is my third time presenting in Massachusetts um in the last year. So if we want to go to the next slide. Um. So this is a rendering of the the building entrance on the corner. Uh, the building is constructed with uh concrete panels, uh painted three neutral colors, uh light gray, dark gray and a and a white. Uh, wall panels uh have reveals in them to separate paint colors. Um, the the colors applied in in blocks to help minimize the scale of the elevation, uh create a rhythm and 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 establish proportion. Uh, that treatment is applied to all four elevations. Um, as Connor mentioned uh earlier, the building is designed um with potential for two separate tenant offices. Uh, one here at the corner uh of the building and a potential future uh one in the center. Um, the actual office plans will be designed uh to meet a future tenant's needs later uh when known. The entry elements, yeah, you can stay there, yep. Um, the entry elements include um, you know, substantial amounts of storefront glazing uh with metal clad uh canopy to signify points of entry. Um, kind of establish some shadow lines and provide cover for um from inclement weather uh weather uh while patrons are uh entering and exiting uh the building. Um, elevations also include clear story windows along the dock walls um to help introduce daylight to the occupied interior warehouse area. Um, as you can see here on the left side of the page, the uh dark gray vertical accent panels are slightly shorter than the adjacent panels uh to provide some visual relief at the long parapet walls. Um, rooftop equipment will be held back, uh one structural bay from the parapet wall uh along the building perimeter. Uh, the height of the building, parapet and um the yard setbacks will effectively screen um the R T U's from the approaching roadway. Um, you can go to the next slide, and these are really all I had to cover and. Open up to questions or keep moving.
Justin, there was a question as to the roof, whether it was pitched or flat.
The 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 roof for this project is uh, there really is no flat roof. Um, so I believe this project has um interior um downspouts uh that put that pitch to the um to the east and west walls. Um, to, let me see here, sorry. Um, so there are there are multiple interior roof drains, so the the I guess what I'm trying to say is there's no gutter and downspouts along the uh no gutter, but but uh scuppers and downspouts along the east and uh east, west and south walls. Um, but internally drained, meaning there are multiple pitches along the rooftop to sloping to drains that are draining inside the building.
So the roof leaders are going to be going into this underground infiltration system and being handled the rest of the stormwater?
Correct.
That's correct.
Good evening, can everyone hear me?
Yep. Have you?
One sec, Ben.
Yep.
Alright, no, go ahead, I'll I'll uh bring up my question after you speak, go ahead.
Certainly, so uh good evening, my name is Ben Muller.
Certainly. So good evening, my name is Ben Muller, one of the principals. Of Ostergard Acoustical Associates, and we were brought on the team to specifically look at the acoustical elements associated with the project. So when carrying out a sound study here, I'm going to go over it in high level, but I want to make sure that the the board and the public have. At least a snapshot of the details that went into this, so. We kind of break out our sound study into three elements. We're going to look at. What are the applicable codes that will govern the site? We're going to look at at what the existing ambient conditions are, which we'll discuss in a second, that the Massachusetts State Code. Heavily ties into what the existing ambient levels are. And then we're going to develop an acoustical model of the site and basically simulate what it would be like if we were to impose. Our site sound emissions onto the existing ambient conditions. And then ultimately, we use this as an evaluation of whether or not mitigation is necessary for compliance or for minimizing potential acoustical impacts. Next slide. So again, starting at codes, this is always where we have our initial kickoff. We have the state of Massachusetts, which has a. It's a a good metric to tie it into the ambient, but it's also a lot thinner than a lot of other codes. There's not as much a robust section of of definitions or clarifications. But essentially, the code ties in that a site sound emission should not exceed. The background ambient sound level at the nearest residence by ten dB. The background sound level is designed is defined as being the sound level that's present ninety percent of the time. So it's not quite the minimum, but it'll be higher than the minimum, it'll be lower than the average, it ends up being a statistical. Relation to the ninety percentile, and you will go over this a little bit more detail when you see the ambient data. That were acquired, and so the idea is there's a certain threshold of 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 average background sound level that exists. And our goal is to not exceed that by more than ten dB. From the town of Mendon side of things, there is no noise bylaw, but there are little sections throughout the zoning bylaw. One, for example, requires that 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 the town can ask for proof that the site will not produce unreasonable noise. And that's certainly what we are are offering up here today. Next slide. So one element of interest here is that there's not anything currently in the site. So that makes it a little bit more straightforward when we survey the ambient, because we know we're not. Surveying something that's going to be replaced. Basically, all of our survey locations. Represent exactly what is in place here without the site or any presence of it. Looking at our area, we chose our two main focal points to be on the west. Location one is on the northeast corner of the property, again, typifying residences that are in the northwestern section of the site. Location two is to the southwest. And location three is along the east, along Cape Road area to show. Document the how well traveled the. Main roads are in the area. And data were acquired over twenty four hour period in the towards the end of August there, August eighteenth to nineteenth, which was a Thursday into a Friday. Next slide. So even though we measured, I mean, I would say only over twenty four hour period, but still twenty four hour period. Results in a lot of data, and so that's why it is best to look at all of these data statistically. So we want to look at the trends. We look at what's our average level, which is the L E Q represented in the middle of our table here. We look at the L min and the L max, which are mostly, which are self-explanatory. And then we also see other statistics in here. There's the L ninety, which is the background sound level, and L ten. Which would be your your intermittent sound level, and so those give you a good spread. Of of identifying what kind of activities are occurring in the area. So from our table here, we see that locations one and two are very similar. Those are the ones on the western side of the site. By the bounded by the wooded portion towards the residences. And we see little deviation there, but they're ultimately a couple dB apart. The average levels are about fifty to fifty two, and then we see maximums only up to seventy, and we see minimums down to the mid forty. So this is about typical for a area that has, you know, of this development. There's nothing to outline here. One thing that is of interest is that the the L ninety and the L ten. Do not deviate much from each other. So what that means to us is is that. The average sound level is is pretty much, there's not much fluctuation that goes a little bit in one way and a little bit in the other way. Now, in comparison, when we look at location three, which is right by the major roadway, we see a lot more of a swing. And that's a representation of the fact that it's near a busier roadway, that there's more pockets or clusters of. Traffic noise as the lights change, and so we see the maximum levels going up by ten dB more. We also see the average levels going up almost by ten dB more, and we also see that influence the other statistics such as the L ten. And the L ninety, but what what ultimately this says is that. On the low end of side, the the whole area of this area of Mendon is relatively the same, right? So we have L ninety values ranging from forty eight to fifty three. Per the Massachusetts State Code, we would add ten dB to the lowest average level that we got there, which is forty eight. Which would say that to comply with the Massachusetts State Code, we would want to design the site to not exceed fifty eight. DBA at residential receptors. Now, just based on, I mean, the the data are what they are, but based on other projects that we we work on. I, even though the code permits it, we would not want to strive for a fifty eight dB criteria for HVAC. That's the that's the equipment that's going to be continuously operating and and present twenty four seven. So we would want to design our HVAC equipment to be closer to the L ninety. And not take advantage of that that ten dB swing. That ten dB swing, in my professional opinion, is more allotted for. The intermittent noise activity such as our truck activity. One thing to mention, when we did our our aerial, I didn't quite point out, but towards the northeast side of our site, there is a school there. That fronts on Cape Road. There's not a provisions within the Massachusetts. Thank you. It's located, can we see my mouse here? I don't know, but yep, right there is the school. So while there aren't provisions within the Massachusetts State Code that specifically address the school. We just set our own project goal to not exceed sixty two, which aligns with what the current influence of Cape Road is on that that corridor. Next slide. So now that we have the ambient established and we know what our project goals are, we develop a model of the site. And so we use a software called Cadena A. It's one of the two major three dimensional acoustical modeling software. I guess tools that are out there to evaluate site sound emissions. We see here that the geometry plays a major role in here with our our distances. Shown in in teal, which is difficult to see, apologize, but it's it's in there. It is meant to be subtle. Because the teal represents the the actual topography, the contours, elevation contours within the site. So the model is truly three D. You could see it most present on the west side of the truck court. Because there is a little bit of an elevation drop there with grading of the site. And so you could see the teal contours clustered a bit closer together as it goes off to the west. So this model represents only the HVAC sound, only that sound that is, wait, go back. Only the sound that is emitted twenty four seven. We don't have a detailed HVAC design here, but we do try to be conservative and throw a decent amount to it. We basically assume here that this warehouse is going to be cooled, which is typically not the case. So we have a lot more tonnage of of HVAC equipment shown here than what will likely go in. But you could see that that with this configuration here, which we're showing eleven rooftop units, each at twenty five tons. That we have offsite emissions that don't even, you know, that barely break forty dB. So you can see that, looking back, recalling our ambient data that we had had measured where we had our our L ninety level. Of about forty eight, that we're well below that, and so HVAC noise will be challenging, if not impossible, to hear at offsite vantage points. Next slide. So now here is where the the mortgage comes, where we know that we're going to have tractor trailers come and go, and so. These noise sources are are much higher in level than our HVAC equipment. So we want to specifically scrutinize their operations on site. So we have a cluster of of four figures, apologize if they're too small. But basically, we're looking at the color contours, and again, our target is is fifty eight. And we have these discrete locations B through H, which are all at the facade. And upper stories for all of our vantage points, our residences and our school. And we look at the color contour that would most line up with what our project goal here is about the, where we start getting into the deep orange. So what we see in the top left is a truck dock activity. This is akin to our backup alarm, our coupling to coupling, our air brake. Truck movements are at lower level, but also thrown in there. So all of these short duration but high level sound activities that will occur in a truck port. And we see from the top left that we have the truck in the the northwestern portion of the dock. Area on the top right, the truck then moves to the southern portion of the dock. We then look at the lower left corner, and we have the truck driving out the southern side of the the site. And then lastly, in the lower right, we have a truck court, a truck. Court activity high level in the the trailer parking area to show what type of effect that could have on on the school. But going back to the two top figures, we see that any of the high level activities. Those the the highest levels offsite result in levels of fifty six or fifty seven. Which are below the fifty eight dB State Code limit that was established. When we look at the school, we look at maximum levels of about sixty at location H. And so again, that would blend right in with the current levels of sixty two that are occurring intermittently because of that. Local traffic noise along Cape Road. Next slide, please. So despite this and having what I would consider to be positive results, or or at least favorable results. To the project to show that we we could comply with code limits. We went a step further and looked at the effects of of implementing barrier here. It was because of the geometry of the site and the configuration, it really lended. The the sound barrier here lended itself quite well to this because residences are primarily, or the closest ones are primarily in one direction. So by implementing this twelve foot barrier here. The recall that we said that the maximum sound levels were about fifty six, fifty seven. And so with this barrier in place, we could see that allocations D E F that those maximums are brought down to fifty two. Fifty fifty one in certain areas, so there's a a noticeable and appreciable amount of reduction. Achieved with this barrier, and I think that this really helps to to bring. You know, even though it's it's permitted, it brings our maximum levels down closer to those average and those background sound levels. That we documented earlier, which is present without the site being in place. Next slide. So just conclusions, we show that our onsite steady and intermittent sounds, so that of the HVAC as well as the intermittent intermittent truck activity. Would be below code limit, and we have a proposed twelve foot barrier that's going to reduce sound particularly to the west, to residential receptors. The residences to the south get advantage from having the the building be in the way as well as not having direct line of sight to the western truck court. We see that with the addition of the the barrier as well, that that just further allows the site sound emissions to blend in with existing sound in the vicinity. And by all accounts, then, the conclusion strongly becomes that there will be no negative coastal impact from on or off site. Operations because we were able to achieve this. This basically the. Connection or conformity of our site sound emissions to to those that are existing. And then next.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
I just, oh, sorry. I I understand some people have some hands raised. I am going to offer the applicant time to finish their. You know, they're going over the project, then the board will ask questions, then I will open it to the community. So hold your question until I I call when you're in, allow you to speak, please.
Real quick, I'd just like to clarify that the roof is entirely internally drained. I know we looked at this multiple ways, and I misspoke earlier, so just wanted to clarify that everything is internally drained.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, Sean Kelly with Van Aston Associates, the traffic engineers in this project. If it pleases the board, what I'd like to do is just take a few minutes to walk you through our traffic study. How it was conducted, what our findings were, what our recommendations are, then I'd be happy to answer any questions that either. Members of the board or the audience might have. So I think, you know, we're all familiar with the project site, you know, it's a vacant site located at the western end of Witten Street. Witten Street, as described, is a is a private road that dead ends at the site. The eastern end of it connects that Route one forty, which is Cape Road, that's a stop controlled intersection. Cape Road within this study areas under Mass D O T jurisdiction. And as such, based on discussions with the state, this project will require us to file for a highway access permit for Witten Street. Next slide. So the study area that we looked at included the locations that we felt would accommodate the majority of project related traffic, and just to walk through those. To the north, we looked at the intersection of Hartford Avenue with Cape Road. This is a signalized intersection, and I'm sure most of you are quite familiar with. We looked at the intersection of Witten Street with Cape Road, taking into account the traffic that's on that corridor today. And then we looked at Bellingham Street to the south. The two southern intersections are both stop sign controlled, and then again, the northern one is is under traffic signal control. Next slide. So the the scope of our assessment adhere to all state and industry guidelines, you know, that the first stages, we went out and looked at the existing. And future traffic conditions, both with and without the project. We did some traffic counts to get a handle on what the volumes are out there today. Under existing conditions, this segment of Cape Road carries about fifteen thousand vehicles a day. Peak hour flows range anywhere from about nine hundred cars an hour in the morning to about eleven hundred cars in the evening. We looked at the safety characteristics of the corridor. We looked at the speeds. We looked at sight lines with the crash data. I think that they, one of the most important things is that the sight lines at the intersection with Witten and Cape are excellent. Both looking northbound and southbound, and there were no issues with respect to safety in terms of churning to or from that corridor. We looked at an access plane, and I'll get into that later in terms of potential upgrades to Witten Street to accommodate the project and bring things into conformance. With state guidelines. And then lastly, we also looked at potential signal timing enhancements for the intersection of Hartford Ave. With Cape Road and South Main Street, as I'm sure you may be aware that, you know, there are a number of movements today. At this intersection that, you know, independent of this project, experienced, you know, long delays, particularly during peak commuter hours. Next slide. In terms of the project itself, when we when we try to forecast how much traffic these projects generate. We rely on data that's published by what's known as the Institute of Transportation Engineers, or the I T E. And the I T E collects traffic counts at facilities for a whole, you know, range of uses, residential, commercial, office, in this case, industrial. And we utilize data for land use code one fifty warehousing. And what that is, is that they basically do traffic counts at warehouses of different sizes. And based on those counts, they develop rates to let you know how much traffic you can expect, both on a daily basis as well as on a peak hour basis. And it also lets you determine how much of the traffic will be, you know, passenger cars, people arriving for work in their personal vehicle versus the truck trips. That will arrive and depart associated with the project. As you can see here, on an average weekday, this project does about three hundred and fifty trips. It's about a hundred and seventy six in, hundred and seventy six out. About two thirds of that traffic is passenger trips, people coming in the morning for work, you know, leaving in the afternoon, leaving for lunch, things of that nature. And the remaining hundred and twenty four trips, which is sixty two in and sixty two out, is the number of truck trips that you would see over the course of a twenty four hour day. When we do these studies, we drill down on what we call the the peak hours of roadway traffic, which are your. Your commuter peak hours, your your seven to nine in the morning, where you you may see school traffic. Your four to six in the afternoon, which is which is your your evening commuter peak. And as you can see, you know, that in terms of the traffic, the bulk of the traffic during commuter hours is the, are those, you know, employees arriving to work. In the morning, you've got, you know, about thirty trips, twenty five of them, as you can imagine, inbound people coming in. And then in the evening, you have about thirty trips and about twenty five of those are people exiting, so. You're going to have an employee arriving, you know, on average, every other minute during those hours. The truck traffic during commuter periods is fairly light, and again, this is again based on those counts that the I T E has developed. And they, and I'll get in. And I'll get into a more complete picture of this. But typically, you know, during your morning peak, you might see two trucks arrive and two leave. And then in the evening, it's more three in, three out. But the bulk of that truck activity does not occur, again, during the peak hours. Summing it together, you know, you're looking at about thirty-five to thirty-seven trips per hour during those busy hours. So it's it's less than a trip per minute on average. Next slide. So this this chart here, again, and this is all based on the ITE data, is your your distribution of traffic. And those two high points that you see there, those are your, the peak hours of the arrival for employees. So in the morning and the evening, as we just went through, you know, you're going to have about, you know, twenty-five, thirty employees, you know, coming and going. And the gray bar represents the truck activity. And as you can see, even during those commuter hours, it's still fairly low, you know, four trips, six trips. The bulk of the activity in terms of trucks coming and going for a project of this type occurs during your, you know, from your, let's say, late morning, your midday, and then your afternoon. You can see those gray bars that are in the in the middle there between the two commuter hour peaks. And typically, you'll have anywhere from ten, twelve, fifteen trucks an hour. And again, just to be clear, this is this is total trips. So when I say ten, I'm talking five trucks coming, five trucks going. You may get up to a seven or eight coming, seven or eight going. But those are during the kind of the midday period when the volumes out there aren't as high as they would be during the commuter peaks. We looked at the distribution of traffic. Most of this traffic is going to be traveling to the north, you know, to Hartford Avenue. We expect that about eighty-five percent of the traffic will be heading north from the site in a smaller amount, fifteen percent will be heading south. Last slide. So, you know, in terms of the conclusions, recommendations, again, you know, project-related traffic is going to amount to about one vehicle every other minute, you know, during the busiest times of of traffic along these roadways. In terms of the increase in traffic, particularly at the most critical location, Hartford Ave, Cape Road, this project is going to add about a one point two percent increase in traffic compared to future conditions without the project. And just to put that into perspective, you know, we assume a one percent growth rate per year over the seven years that we do these studies. So this project, in terms of the growth in traffic, would be about what we expect every year. And again, the just the growth we assumed in traffic background growth would be higher than this itself. I will point out that we did take into account other projects in the area as well, including the, you know, six hundred thousand plus square foot facility in Hope Dale, and that has been incorporated into our analysis. Again, as pointed out, based on the speeds out there, we've looked at the sight lines at Witten Street with Cape Road, and they're all meet and will exceed the requirements. So there's no issues in terms of safety. We have had discussions with Mass DOT, and really, it's more of a filing issue in terms of them not having anything on record. But they are requiring that we file for a highway access permit for the intersection of Cape Road with Witten Street because they have no records of anything ever being filed there. One of the benefits of that is that, you know, we'll have to look at what's out there today and bring that into conformance with current Mass DOT standards. That means, you know, adding measures that aren't there now, such as a center line that's painted, a stop bar, a stop sign, looking at the radiator to ensure that they're appropriate to accommodate truck activity. So all of that will have to be done following, you know, completion of the local permitting effort with the state as part of the DOT access permit. And then lastly, you know, we have talked to the state about the intersection of Hartford Avenue with Cape Road. And again, you know, today, independent of this project, there certainly are movements, particularly that that westbound left turn in the morning coming from Hartford Avenue onto Cape Road that do experience long delays. We've looked at the timing, we looked at the phasing, and you can, what we do, what we call optimizing it, where you look at the cycle length and make it the optimal cycle length to give the lowest delays for each movement. We shift a little bit of green time here and there from certain movements to make it work as well as it can. And by doing that, we can we can offset the impacts of the projects that the delays don't increase beyond what they would be in the no-bill condition. But certainly, you know, to really fix this intersection and make it work as well as it could, would require improvements that, you know, are outside of the scope of a project of this type. And quite frankly, would require, you know, getting private properties that we simply don't control. But we certainly are willing to work with the state to work on that timing and make sure we can make it work as well as it can with this project in place. And that's really what I have tonight for traffic. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Actually, every question I had. Now, my major concern was number of trips per day and how many, how much of that was trucking, how much of that was private vehicle? And yeah, what was coming and going? I think you've pretty much achieved all that in your conversation.
Are you planning a twenty-four-hour operation?
So because we don't, sorry, because we don't have a tenant yet, we're not sure of exactly how the building will function. But most tenants ask that they have the ability to access the facility twenty-four hours. So the way
Sorry, go ahead, finish.
I was just going to say, the way they typically work is if they do run three shifts, the majority of the overnight shift is within the warehouse building.
You have a target type of tenant?
Distributors, warehouses, there's been, just to give you a sense of tenants kind of out in the market, like Ferguson, who does like bath and kitchen supply. They're out looking for two hundred thousand square feet. You know, that's just this one specific example, Lowe's maybe for building supplies. So just typical warehousing stuff coming in, getting stored there to be distributed either to stores or to domes.
Would it be a refrigerated warehouse? Could be?
Most likely not. It could in the future be built kind of box and box is what you call it. You build the actual inside, but we wouldn't plan to build it on spec with a refrigeration component.
Now, the twelve-foot barrier, are you anticipating putting a twelve-foot barrier in?
That's what we're proposing as part of the base project, yes. Yep.
And what is that going to be? What's going to be the material for that?
I'm not exactly sure, Ben. I don't know if you have any comment on that. I think there's a couple of different options, but I don't think we landed on one yet.
No, we haven't. So there's a wide variety of materials that are commercially available. The goal here is that we make it heavy enough, it has enough heft, so we can't make it out of tissue paper, so that it does what we want it to, which is prevent noise from going through it and sends it to its flanking paths. So something that's, you know, five, six pounds per square foot will do the trick. So it can't be like a lightweight wood product. There are wood materials, but they're going to be pressure-treated and thick enough. There's also kind of PVC vinyl that's loaded. There's also some that are made of metal. Concrete is an option too, depending on on availability and costs. But usually, we look at what is, you know, aesthetically matching to the project and kind of fits into the budget.
Well, yeah, a concern of ours would be the aesthetics of the wall. You know, if any residents could see it from the other side, potentially, that aesthetically, the wall would look
How much land do you, square footage of you, are you planning a public water supply on that property?
For the fire, yes.
Yes, for the fire, it will be the public water supply. And we're proposing domestic wells for the domestic water supply, which will be just based on employee usage, which will be a lower, lower amount, obviously, if you're proposing a subdivision.
But that amount of people don't have
Would it be standpipe fire protection?
Sorry, to answer the, there will be a tower, water storage tower and fire pump for the for the fire protection, yes.
Don't you have to have a public water supply for consumption?
Yeah, the wells themselves would be considered public water supplies. That's what I mentioned, the outset, we're getting permitted through the DEP right now.
Town water or wells?
That will be wells.
I noticed that you had a hundred feet, isn't it supposed to be two hundred feet? For a public water supply?
I think it's hundred-foot radius.
No, I believe it's one hundred.
It's a hundred.
Based on flow per well would be a hundred, yes.
Is vehicle traffic inside the building?
No, not intended to be. The only, there's two roll-up doors for them bringing in and out the racking, but there won't be drive-throughs or anything like that.
Can I, can we get a detailed landscaping plan with a planting schedule on it? That you're proposing? And have you actually done a cut and fill analysis? Is it mostly, it's probably going to be fill, will be tilted toward fill, I guess.
I think I think you had ninety-two thousand square feet of fill coming in.
Correct, it was it was somewhere in the in the range, a little south of a hundred thousand yards due to, due to the high groundwater tables in general through the site. We didn't want to have significant cuts. Yeah, so we we have mostly cut on the parking area side and most and fill through the building and on the and on the west, west side of the building.
And I, to Connor, I know that at one point you went through quite the arithmetic to determine the building height. And for the board, I believe that's been approved by the building commissioner, correct?
Correct.
The only question I, concern I have, I shouldn't say question I have, concern I have, and I see the fire chief sitting up there. So, you know, men in fire supply, we've never dealt with a building this size, really. I mean, we've got, you know, the dealerships up here, they're comparable, but not quite as large. And handling a fire in that type of, that size of building in that height of building, we currently don't have any equipment that could manage if there was a fire in the center of the building and, you know.
So the the building, and we can, I'm not the expert, we can get you the full report from our fire system design professionals who are also designing the water tank. I think the water tank has three hundred thousand gallons. And it's an ESFR.
You've got to talk to that guy over there.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
As long as he believes it.
Sure, yeah, so the water tank will be three hundred thousand gallons, and it's an ESFR system throughout the building that I can get you the specs on of how long it'll take to put out the fire within the building.
I rely on the municipal water system for fire protection. And then I saw on the planes, but I heard the tank as well. Just sort of, and I think we really need to make sure we pay attention to how the municipal water system is going to be utilized. Because I'll tell you, I can't refill a truck down in that area without getting calls from the water and should have here that residents are getting groundwater or got no water. To the point where my experience over the last four years trying to do it has been, we're going to run tankers to a fire out there in the current residential area because I'm not confident that we can get enough out of a height. So just be concerned about the use of the current water system if it's not upgraded. That's not going to make the situation any worse.
Understood, we can have our designer of the fire system come and present as well.
Yeah, I mean, the three hundred thousand gallons water sounds great. They put a hundred and ten thousand gallon tank in Oxbridge for, I think it's going to be eight hundred thousand square foot.
It's in a tower?
A tower, yes.
How tall is that tower?
I think it's still underdesigned, but I think thirty feet. It's either twenty-five or thirty feet.
So we've got a thirty-foot water tower going up.
Yeah.
I don't call it, I call it a
It depends on how wide, it depends on how you
It's really a tank, Bill.
Yeah.
We had one that watered two hundred seventy-five thousand gallon tank.
Yeah.
Still do.
Yeah.
Connor, could you make sure he gets
Yep, absolutely.
And your professional meets with him, I think.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I'm going to request a sign-off letter from you for the file, Bill, when once that's all
And just to full disclosure, I'm not an FPD and I'm not an engineer for Hyatt House. We rely on Department of Fire Services, their engineers are there for review and setup of time.
Sounds good, one more peer review we got to
Happy to do it.
I can't keep track of them.
Yeah.
Some of that's going to depend on what ultimately is going to be in there. You don't know that, but I think the worst-case scenario the warehouse items are going to drive the size. And the ESAR, I was in Oxbridge when BJ's went up, so I know that's a high-volume system.
Yep.
Which is very good, I like that. I think we just need to work through the engineer.
Sure.
And the chief brought something up that I had written down. And as you know, I work in Oxbridge as well, in Millville for that matter. But we've dealt with many of these spec warehouses. And and I heard Sean, who I respect a lot, doing the traffic analysis, and he uses IT. Everybody does, you have to. But there's reality and there's IT. And these warehouses become so specific in their nature that IT isn't exact. And my point is that when, I'm going to suggest that when and if you get to an approval stage, that we have some backup, that when you've identified a user, we know, we have Sean in our peer reviewer, review the reality data.
Yep.
I'm also going to suggest that if and when you approve this, that six months, eight months, maybe a year, I don't have that clear in my head. After you open the doors, we look at it a third time. Again, Sean, our guys, and that we say, okay, yes, what you told us is reality. And if it isn't, how do we fix that? So that kind of thing.
Yep.
I know what you're doing, I know you're giving us, I assume, the best data you can. But it's not exact. And the same thing with fire protection, you don't know exactly what's going on.
Yeah, I think any use that's coming in is going to have to be looked at by the planning board. You know, it's to to get an approval for the use, you're going to need to come in.
Yeah, so we'll have some language
Yep.
that mandates the whole thing, just to zero in on it.
Yep, assume there'd be
You want to be prepared.
Yep.
We're a small town, we can't, we can't handle, you know, surprises well. We'll be ready. All right, did you guys have any further question? Are you guys done, by the way?
Oh, we're done presenting, yes.
Okay, all right. Board members, anything? The only thing I'd like to make the public aware, now, this this area has been proposed and approved for two prior projects already that probably fortunately never got built. One was several unit commercial building development, which never got built. And the other one was a housing unit, I think there, I forget how many housing units there were. It was a big apartment complex that was approved back there several years ago. So we are going to keep in mind, something eventually will be built there. And we want to be sure of what we want and 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 what is best for the town then. So, I mean, we could certainly end up with an apartment complex down there. Somebody will come and build one if we're not careful. So that being said, I'm going to open to the community, let them let you ask your questions. You've been waiting patiently, sir. Go ahead.
Is the roof
Up, name and address, please.
Very much, we'll be putting some is the roof and the parking area, by the way, is it, it's a trucking and the concrete or asphalt? And does the roof have any asphalt?
If you talk, you got to use a mic because nobody at home can hear you.
Okay, all right.
Could you repeat that question for the people at home?
Yes, the parking lot and the roof, are they going to have an asphalt content in either one or both?
Gentlemen? Someone?
Yes.
I think that's for the architect.
I can, I can speak, so the parking area will have, will have asphalt. There'll be a heavy, heavy-duty asphalt, the thicker, thicker course for the trucks going around the loop. And the passenger cars will be a standard, standard thickness asphalt.
And the roof is a white roof membrane, TPO roof membrane, which will help kind of reduce any heat island effect.
No concrete on the roof, to clarify.
Asphalt on the roof.
Yeah, asphalt, yes.
Billy, you have one online if you need that. Vicki?
I saw a couple popping up as we were.
Yeah, hi.
Yes.
Hi, um, my name's Vicki Grisanti. I'm a resident at thirteen Talbot Farm Drive in Mendon. So I have to say, in listening to this presentation, it runs pretty contrary to the um, the conversation I heard at the previous meeting regarding the master plan for Mendon. Um, I would say this project, you know, doesn't follow the the guidelines set forth in that plan whatsoever. And in fact, for the residents on the property adjacent to this facility, um, you know, it's gonna create a significant amount of noise, air pollution, light to some degree. Um, you know, I I had hoped to hear more from the board around, you know, how this um would move the town forward in the direction that we hope to see.
Well, first of all, this is an area town that we designated as a as um fiscally important to the town as far as economic development. That was that was done probably a dozen years ago. Um, unfortunately, Mendon only has two corridors that it can utilize for economic development. That's Route sixteen and one forty. Um, so this area uh is extremely important in in utilizing um the property to gain tax revenue. Um, that being said, we we moved it to more of an industrial um area due to the fact that we were trying to uh not promote any type of large residential housing units, which you're seeing across many towns at this point in time. So uh, if this is much more advantageous to the town of Mendon than a multi-unit uh dwelling that is gonna impact the school systems and probably more traffic than this facility will create.
Bill, can I add to the applicant? Um, she also mentioned, and you guys didn't, light, lighting, and any uh analysis on potential pollution, light pollution, or air pollution? If you wanna speak to that.
I think we spoke about the downlighting.
We talked about the lighting.
Yes, the lighting, yeah, we have downlighting proposed and have submitted a photometrics plan to to indicate, yes.
We can send you the photometric plan uh regarding lighting if you'd like. Just contact G L R I. And air pollution, has that been?
We didn't, we didn't do a study on air pollution, other than the noise pollution, but we're certainly open to. Um. Typically, not a lot of pollution from these facilities, but for the truck traffic specifically, uh, or any, I should say. Um, so we're happy to provide some data on that, just relative to what the.
Yeah, we could, I mean, we could have, if you could pull some data together and have it uh, send it to our peer reviewer.
Absolutely.
And where do we stand with the peer reviews on this project?
Yeah, both have been submitted. Uh, I mean, the plans and everything been submitted to Graves Engineering and to MDM, the traffic engineer. I talked to them both today.
Do the environmental?
I did not. I, is that what you'd like?
I'd like to see the environmental impact.
Okay, I will also submit it to an environmental consultant, Joel Fish.
Okay.
Frish, I hope I pronounced that correct, and make sure they have it as well.
Yeah, sure. And if you need anything else as far as their review, I'll be able to provide it.
No, it's uh.
One more online.
All right, another hand up over here. We got a couple of hands up. Who's next, Dan?
I think Henry Chu is the other one that had us get up.
Yep.
Hello there. Uh, yeah, uh, Andy Chu, uh, twenty-two Talbot Farm Drive. Uh, so we're probably going to ask like, every, every area. Um, uh, there was a a bar graph that was shown that kind of showed the traffic distribution. And that's uh, uh, you, you, I don't know, it it may be helpful if someone can bring that one back up. Uh, the one who, the fellow who did, the gentleman who did the traffic analysis, because there was one slide that shows the distribution giving a twenty-four hour day, as well as some table that showed the average number of cars coming and going and whatnot.
Can you bring that up, Dan?
I got it.
Oh. I have that up.
Oh, you had it.
Yeah, so like, so, yeah, so 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 this one, um, um, because you have some, um, if you go back one slide, we show the previous, um, that that's in the table form, that show the average number or total number of cars and whatnot, right? So I think this is one problem here, where I think that you do the weekday AM peak hour, the weekday PM peak hour, but uh where you show the trucks at two and three, but when you actually look at your twenty-four hour distribution, your peak hours are actually around eleven o'clock, right? Where you, I'm seeing like a fifteen, where you're projecting both a fifteen for traffic, uh, for passenger cars as well, fifteen for trucks. So I just wanted to make sure that I am reading it correctly.
That's. No, those aren't the peak hours. Those are the midday hours.
Yeah, the the, I think, I think the the number you show may well be the peak hour for the passenger car, which are the two long blue.
Yeah.
Blue ones at seven o'clock and five o'clock.
Well, that's normal.
Peak hour for truck, but those are not the actual peaks, right?
That that's correct. The the industry guideline for a project of this type typically says you want to focus on the your weekday morning and your weekday evening peak hours. And that's because that's when the volume of traffic along these quarters is at their heaviest. Now, certainly during those hours, that the bulk of the impact of this project is gonna be passenger cars, not truck cars. We could look at the traffic at, you know, say eleven AM and and look what the impact is. But what we know is that traffic along these quarters at eleven AM is significantly lower than it would be at seven or eight in the morning when people are driving to work. So the reason we focus on those morning hours, even though w- we would acknowledge that there's more truck activity in the midday, is because when you take that that combined scenario of the existing volumes, you know, plus growth, plus the project-related traffic, the heaviest hours are still gonna be, you know, seven to nine and and four to six in that in those general time periods. Um, the eleven to, you know, ten to eleven in the morning is typically quite a bit lower, because people are already at work, people are already at school, and there's less volume on the corridor. So the truck traffic would be higher, but the combined volume between what's out there today, plus what we're adding, would still be lower than would be during those those commuter peaks.
Yeah. And and I think for the purpose of determining uh the 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 impact on, you know, on one forty and whatnot, um, I I I think what you said makes is perfectly reasonable. Okay, so so uh, so so I'm not picking a bone on that one. What 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 I think it um, maybe uh, uh, well, it what is a little bit harder for me is, I was trying to to get a sense of, uh, you know, I think you mentioned like, you know, the the trucks, you know, they they back up, they change gear, they use air brake, they, you know, go back and forth a few times and whatnot, right? I want to understand the number of truck that can be making noises, right? So in that case, the the two or three per hour that you use, you know, correctly for traffic impact is not the same as what what uh, what the traffic pattern will look like from a noise generation and the impact on the neighbors' perspective, right? As a matter of fact, if we use this as is, then we actually find that that the neighbors who are on the other side of the building will hear fifteen trucks during lunchtime, right? So I think that's how I read the chart, which is not, I wouldn't say you highlighted or didn't highlight it, it's more just a piece of information that is in the chart but not core out. If if, you know, if I'm the, you know, neighbor who is in Talbot Farm Drive and want to understand when they're going to be loudest, this one is going to be from, you know, from nine to noon, actually, right? And so that's just one way to read this 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 information. Another one is, I think a little bit later on, then you talk about, since this is a, you don't have an existing client, you actually um, do not know their usage pattern yet, right? So I and I don't know how warehouses work, you know, I don't know when the trucks showed up, but if there are enough people to work three shift, um, my desk, is there a corresponding, you know, fifteen trucks an hour that that gets regular throughout the day because it's running twenty-four seven? Right, so it's one thing to say that there are fifteen trucks, you know, coming along at at noon time, but it's probably not as good for the neighborhood if it's doing that at two in the morning.
Well, I, the one thing we could say is, I mean, they're just using studies that have worked. Um, and there's there's software and information out there that they they utilize to project. I mean, it's never gonna be, it could be less even. Um, you can never.
Well, I understand that, but this one is not.
Depending upon. Depending upon what the application's gonna be, which we're gonna review when it comes in, to to make it allowable use. Um, it it could end up being less. I mean, this is just something that, you know, on every project they use to to try and gauge what the traffic may or may not be. Um, and it's the best, the best guess that we have at this point.
Yeah, I I mean, I think, I think, you know, from a traffic impact perspective, right? If you get fifteen trucks at two o'clock in the morning, I don't think one forty would have any problem stopping for, you know, for the instruction, you know, at two in the morning. I'm I'm more, I want to, I think I want to focus on, if this traffic pattern, if if this distribution pattern is for a single shift, right, then that's one thing. If this traffic pattern repeats itself three times throughout the day, then I think some of the question that we want to understand is, will I hear fifteen trucks at two o'clock in the morning whenever they make delivery? And 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 correspondingly, because there was also a question about um light pollution, which was not um really discussing details. Um, um, I I think the 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 geography was very annoying. They have a lot of light, you know, I can look up and and see there's a glow there from my backyard. Uh, but that is that, right? Like, if you did, if these people go home at, you know, nine o'clock in the, in, in, you know, at nine and turn it all off, that is that. But you need to have all the light on at two in the morning, so that those fifteen trucks can do deliveries, then you're going to be a lot more light and not more noise. And like, in in, and we can sort of discuss it in an educated or meaningful way, we do not know what the client is.
Well, they they have. They've done a photo play plan that we've got to, you know, we can have uh a peer review done on that also. Um, we can have someone take a look at that, make sure it's confined to the the um, I mean, everything is downlighting today. Um, you know, even the largest of uh, facilities, uh, the parking areas and the building lighting is all downlit, um, and doesn't uh, doesn't permeate to the neighbors uh like it used to.
Yeah, um, I in in in, and I think there's, like I said, without knowing exactly how this facility operates, no, I can't, I'm not holding you, uh, you know, I'm not asking you to guarantee what your future client's going to look like a year from now, five years from now, or ten years from now.
Well, that's why we'll look at it, we'll look at every use that comes in, and then we'll be, you know, address it at that point in time. Uh, I've got to move on to other people who are looking to speak.
And I can ask Graves to look at light.
Yeah, you can have, ask Graves to look at light. So take a look at the lighting and and the noise, I think, is gonna be delineated by the barrier, uh, if I'm correct. So it should greatly reduce, especially where where you are at Talbot Farms, the barrier should greatly reduce truck noise. So I don't.
Well, uh, uh, and and I would just ask, like, you you can put the height of the building and the height of the trucks in perspective, because you heard that, you know, you're going to build a twelve-foot barrier presumably around the perimeter. Uh, but I think the trucks themselves are like fourteen feet tall, right? Or something like that. So I don't know what that, how how could that, how how much that helps, or or maybe the engine sits low enough, so it's it's not an issue. But I also heard that because the building is graded, so I don't know how high it sits up, and then and then you you put lights on top of it, or put light that, you know, that can aid the trucks working at night, and what that really looks like from the neighbors, from the residents backyard.
Yeah, well, we'll take a look at that. Um, and we'll have the engineers sort that out for us, and uh, we'll take a a long look at the lighting plan and make sure. Um, but Mr. Chu, I appreciate, I appreciate your questions, and uh, I've got to move on to the rest of the community here who may have questions.
Thank you, yeah, yeah, thank you.
I think we have another hand up, did we? Or we got someone from the people? What is that, Dan?
No, that's it. There's one from the chat, and I didn't, I don't know if he asked it, will there be any antennas on the roof, people building height impact, hope they have air force flight path?
No antenna, sorry, may I?
Go ahead.
Uh, no antennas on the roof, and we have filed preliminary with the FAA that there should be no impact, because the building will be lower than the trees.
Okay.
At the College, three Bates Street. Uh, I have a myriad of concerns about this development, uh, but I'll restrict my comments to two at the moment. Uh, first and foremost, my concern is that at present, that intersection at Hartford Ave is woefully inadequate in handling tractor-trailer traffic. Uh, most notably, we've, you know, since we've seen Amazon move into the area, you know, anytime trying to take a turn onto Hartford Ave can cause significant delays and problems. Now, I know we've done the traffic, you know, impact assessment with respect to number of trips and things of that nature, but what I didn't hear commented on was specifically kind of the geometry of that intersection.
Well, our peer reviewer will be going over that. We, that's one thing we've already requested. The town is hiring its own engineers to review their engineers. So what's that?
But as I understand it, that's a state highway that we don't have the ability to influence. Um, my concern is that we approve this at some point without having any sort of mitigation at that intersection.
Well, that's, I would believe that I, our peer reviewer, who um is representing the town of Mendon and not the applicant, would let us know if if what the changes would need to be, that if they're necessary. I mean, we're talking three hundred and fifty trips a day uh coming from this, that isn't considered a large amount.
It's not, but it, when it takes just one Amazon truck to gum up that intersection, I have to throw it in reverse so that they don't take off my hood.
And maybe we'll, maybe we'll make some adjustments to the radius of the corners or.
Right.
That has to be done with the acceptance of the.
When I talk to MDM, I will make sure that they look at the radii and that it can or can't handle truck traffic. There's standards.
You gotta have to make, you know, make a provision that they can't take a left out of, uh, in in all truck traffic has to go through Bellingham. And and then we don't have a radius issue, do we?
I don't think that's much better, but I'll I'll move on to my second point. So uh, with respect to to sound impact to surrounding residents, um, you know, I appreciate that the applicant has given some consideration to the west, but I have not heard any consideration to residents to the south, southwest, or southeast, of which I am one. Uh, there's no, no wall on that side, uh, and, you know, at least one of the traffic, uh, the truck egress from the site uh appears to be on the southern side of the building as well.
I uh, I'll, I'll let uh Mr. Muller answer to that question regarding the noise on that side of the building.
Certainly. Um, and I I don't, we did have a figure in there that addressed your concern, but we don't necessarily need to bring that back up. Um, but to the west had the the shortest amount of distance. Um, that, the entire west, if we recall, the the figure with the sound wall covered, the the barrier covers the entire west side. So that's not specifically to only target the people that are directly um to the west of the site, but it also covers those to the northwest and the southwest, uh, because anytime the barrier is gonna intervene with the line of sight to the truck, it's gonna have um the 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 benefit of the the reduction. Uh, we looked at a truck driver on the southern part of the site, as well as anyone to the north or south that had line of sight, uh, where the barrier wasn't providing coverage, and there is sufficient distance there to afford its own attenuation, so supplemental barriers aren't needed in those directions. So it wasn't as if we were uh only targeted. So supplemental barriers aren't needed in those directions. So it wasn't as if we were uh only targeting or focusing on one. Uh, receptor. We looked at all the receptors. Um, it's just that because of the different geometries and the distances that are in place, uh, it wasn't warranted to the north or the south.
All right, I'll just, I'll make one last point on that.
One, one thing that I, you know, I'd like for us to consider here as well is to the south of the site is where the solar fields are. So that's largely land that has been cleared and has, you know, direct line of sight shot, especially to uh the Edward Road residents. Um, and uh, you know, at least in my area in Bates Street as well. Um, so, you know, normally you could count on, you know, vegetation and whatnot to help with mitigation of sound impact. Uh, but at present, with with that site already having been developed, there's there's really nothing there to to help.
Well, just, I mean, just to add my uh, just the noise element to it here, um, there is. There is at least some vegetative area to provide screening there. Uh, but in our models, we don't consider any of the vegetation to be acoustically beneficial. Um, it has to be substantially dense to start getting any sort of attenuation that you would get out of a barrier. And and still, yet we show that that because you have that that solar panel field in between, that you're afforded hundreds of more feet. Uh, than is afforded to the west. Uh, but but again, not that there's a a a yin and yang to this. Um, your your vantage point is just as protected as those to the west. It's just that we don't need to supplement it with a a sound barrier.
Well, we certainly will have the uh, the uh. Peer reviewer take a look at the, they're gonna be going over all of this. So we'll have them take a look at it and see what they feel regarding the uh noise. Uh, to to the north, the Anisal. We'll take a look in both directions. I mean, ultimately, uh, you know, um, we're one of the first planning boards in the area to to utilize peer reviewers for entire projects. Um, and we're doing that to uh. Put the town at ease, that these projects that are coming through here at this point fit the town amended. And uh, you know, they're expensive. I mean, these applicants are spending a lot of money having these peer reviews done and completed to make sure it fits the town amended. Uh, when the results are in, we'll take a look at them and see what the the results of those peer reviews are. I.
You've been waiting.
Go ahead.
And we do, I'm Miss Park, it's just one in my backyard. Um, when I look out my kitchen window right now, I can look right directly down the runway for the airport. Uh, my concern is um on the traffic study. When he put up the map or the drawing indicating Hartford Avenue East, Witten Road, and then he went, dropped all the way down to Bellingham Street. He forgot Bates Street. There was a great deal of traffic coming off one forty and going on to one forty from Bates Street. And the traffic's coming from Rhode Island. So they're coming down one twenty six, picking up North Avenue and following all the way down to Bates Street. So I think the traffic's going to be a lot more than what they're anticipating.
Can you guys take a look at the Bates Street intersection?
Yeah, no problem.
Okay.
Yep.
Back.
Yeah, have your hands popping up a little bit, please.
Yeah, I, uh, Justin Brook, six Joseph Road. Uh, I just had a few quick questions. Uh, some of them are already been addressed, not to beat a dead horse, obviously the intersection thing. Um, all due respect, Mr. Chairman, the uh peer reviewers are great and everything. But I live there and stuff like that, and it looks great on paper sometimes, just as you said with the traffic study. That stuff looks great on paper, but I guarantee you they can't take a right hand. No trucks trailers can take a right hand turn.
It's funny you mention that because uh, the the other morning I sat at that intersection, you know how many trucks I saw even go through that intersection? It looks like the trucks are avoiding that intersection. Because I I only saw, in the entire time I was sitting there, which is about forty five minutes, I only saw three. So it looks like they may be avoiding that intersection.
I I have a hard time making a right hand turn uh on Route forty, turning right onto Hartford Ave to go towards the highway. I have a hard time if I have my utility trailer behind my pickup truck, if there's someone trying to take a left hand turn on one forty. I'll tell you right now, an Amazon driver is definitely not gonna make it. Where's where's Damon when you need him? Um, I just had um on her point too, the solar field. I know you guys cited distance as a mitigation for light and sound. But as she said, I mean, if when you're driving up there, when you're going by the airport, looking our direction, you can see the houses on Edward Road now. Um, so if you can see the airport, you're definitely going to be seeing every bit of light on the building that's on this outside. Every tractor trailer that comes around facing that direction, those lights are going to be facing in if there's no barrier. Um, you're gonna see every, it's gonna be like it's in their in their back window, you know what I mean?
Can we increase the vegetation on that, on that western side?
Look at, certainly.
I know that I.
It's on the south side, yeah.
On uh, I don't know what you have planned for the wall or barrier or whatever it's gonna be. I know you've had.
I think if you build too much wall around there, you're gonna kind of be suffocating the noise and it's gonna end up going out to the street or other people's house, directing at other people's.
Well, at least if it goes up towards the industrial area that we've allocated, at least it's better than going towards the residential guys.
That's true.
Have abutted it, or it's gonna go up. But I have seen, um, not to just pose problems the whole time. Um, in a couple of warehouses, they had some large vegetated berms, which. You don't have to maintain them. You don't have to worry about them being disheveled in a few years, whatever. And when you look at them through the little bit of vegetation behind the houses. It looks like woods if you're looking, you know what I mean? Because it's just the leaves fall on the on the berm and they'll be, you plant trees on top of them or whatever. Um, you know, but in a large scale.
Well, we'll take a look at that.
Not like the small ones. They've done it with.
Yeah.
You know, they may be twenty feet tall, some of them. I don't know what you can fit or whatever, but it's very natural looking. And when you look through it, it's like a continuation of the woods, you know what I mean? That's.
Let's take a look at that.
Throw it out there.
We'll take a look at it with our.
And the lighting on, I didn't know if there was gonna be lighting on top of the building. That's thirty five feet high, you said. It's just gonna be poles.
There will be lights on the exterior. Yeah, wall pack.
Wall pack.
So it'll be what, three quarters of the way high, pointing straight down?
Two thirds high.
Two thirds high. Um.
Yeah, so they're probably somewhere between sixteen and twenty feet off the ground. That's normally where they they end up.
So you put a twelve foot, even if you put a twelve foot barrier, that's.
But they usually, it's down lighting, yeah.
It's a glow, as as other people have mentioned.
You know, put shield, we, and we'll put shields on them so you won't see them.
Yeah, but still get the glow. I mean, again, I understand we're in industrial.
Well, yeah, but they're they're thirty foot highlights.
The um, the noise study, I know you did that.
Yeah.
When I first moved in, when that was vegetated and the solar field was vegetated, I could hear, it was very quiet at my house. Since that's been cut, I can hear all the trucks taking off on Hartford Ave in the morning, when they're trying to take off up that hill. I can hear the trucks now. So the difference, just to the board's attention, how much just the clearing. This, this study's been taken now after everything's clear cut. But when the development was made and everything, we had a huge buffer. You didn't hear anything down in there.
Yeah.
So I understand what we're doing. It looks good on paper and.
Right. Well, maybe this building will cut some of that off for you.
It will, except for the backup beepers that are a hundred and twenty decibels, you know what I mean? Those cut through everything.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, okay, and then the only other question I had was for Chief Maybe could answer, do we have enough? This is like a whole nother city to mend and uh, do we have the EMS personnel? And uh, are we able to respond to something of a sizable event with that many people coming in and out of there?
So, I mean, that's a tough question to answer. Uh, we have two people on duty twenty four seven, one ambulance in the station. So uh, yeah, it depends. I mean, I don't know.
We had, and wait, their estimation is a hundred people?
Hundred total, yes.
I mean, it's, it.
Yeah.
It's impact, I I don't think is going to be overrun the the fight apartment with calls uh. For EMS services.
When I was in Nuxbridge, my experience was we were probably going to BJ's not more than twice a week. BJ's, that's a six hundred thousand square foot building. Um, so guess off the top of my head is maybe one call a week, so I'm not sure if this would overwhelm the system, but. We do only have one ambulance and we rely on mutual aid or any other support.
One in the back, Bill.
Okay.
One in the back. Bill.
Yeah.
Garry and Mont's fourteen Putting Stone Lane. Is the HACC equipment gonna be on the roof or on the ground? And if it's on the ground, are you gonna build noise abatement around that because it generates twenty four seven?
I think you said it's gonna be on the roof.
Yeah, yeah.
It's gonna be on the roof. They had already.
Oh, that's even worse because that rejects the noise that much farther.
Yeah, well, we will have it, we will have a pair of views done. And at this point in time, I'm not gonna accept any more questions. We're going, we're going to continue the meeting till the next meeting. And uh, we're gonna wait to, we're gonna wait for some of the peer reviews to come back so we have more answers. Because I see repetitive questioning coming and it's just a matter of, I don't have those answers for you at this time. Wow.
Lot of work to do.
Yeah, we got, this is gonna be a while before we we get through this, so everybody be patient.
Daniel, make a motion and continue January ninth.
January twelfth.
Second.
Wait.
Garry, I'm gonna be here in twelve.
No, January ninth, you said.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm getting the months mixed up.
You got me mixed. All right, so January, January, take month, January ninth.
January ninth.
Do I have a second?
Second is early.
All right. Uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I, we'll just keep working forward with that, um, with those peer reviews and see if we can get this.
See you next year.
Take off. Enjoy your holidays. Only one more to go.
Yeah. Get the. Twenty seven. Famous, he had.
I don't know how that's going. I haven't heard. I should think.
It's gonna be. I wouldn't do that.
No, I wouldn't do that either.
So. Yeah. Yeah.
It's all right, let him go.
That's it. We're gonna make, we're gonna get them all the answers, say why. And get them all the answers, why. All right.
I saw that.
Can you guys take that conversation outside? We got another public hearing.
Leave me here, Bob, I'll pass them down.
Is that Christmas stickers?
Yes.
Jesus.
They're going in.
All right.
Hey, old Patsy's down, Bill.
Hello. All right, we we are going to open the public hearing on. I'll read the, I'll read the notice. Into the record, in accordance with MGL, MGL, chapter forty eight, section eleven, notice is hereby given. That a public hearing will be held on Monday, November twenty eighth. Twenty twenty two at seven PM in the Men in Town Hall. To consider a site plan review for demolition of two existing single family homes and construction of a. Gas station convenience store, one forty seven Hartford Avenue East. The plan is submitted by Bob Coxon of Gary and Hanlon, three thirty three West Street, Milford. Owner of the property is Child, Charles View Place, Inc. of Hopedale, Mass. All right, same rules apply. Bob, let's take it away.
Thank you. Um, so. A little bit of history.
Yeah, this looks familiar.
We have, a gas station convenience store was approved on this property on December twelfth, two thousand and eleven.
Same plans?
So, no. So subsequently, um, the 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 second page that you have in front of you. Is that, is that, uh, is that, that, that submission?
Yep.
What we have here is now.
On my car.
Made some changes to the project by reducing the size of the building. From four thousand square feet to thirty two hundred square feet and provided a drive through. Uh, for a coffee window.
Where's the window located? Across the back?
Right the back there, right here. So this is a drive through all the way down here.
All right.
And and we, and the, we've added additional egress. We only had one before and the particular current person who wants to build this site. Like another egress, so we added another egress here. And that's pretty much the only change that we've made to this plan, other than the fact that um. We were gonna, we we originally proposed a um, to use the public water supply that was supplied to the two residences by the town of Hopedale. Citing that the um. The daily flow to two, three bedroom houses was less than what was. Proposed for the uh, for the proposed light development of the convenience store. But town of Hopedale is no longer allowing any commercial buildings to connect in Mendon.
So where is the well located?
So, so. Because we are, they're gonna serve coffee, now they've become a non transient. Uh, public water.
This is a well way out on the back, yeah.
So, yeah, we, so the wall is gonna be beside it right back here. We have.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah.
On development, so so that the VEP. Uh, and we can, we can, we can certify a public water supply here. Uh, we have been, we've got approval from DEP already to uh, to for the location. And the ten, and they're giving us permission to start doing the testing for this project, testing of the well.
And we move, this is the one where we um, we approved uh, putting the uh.
Septic system in the, in the.
The residential.
Yeah. The the previous plan had septic and detention bay on in the residential area. But we couldn't do that and still maintain the hundred foot um, their radius for the, for the water supply, so the. Drainage is now being taken care of in an underground detention area.
In the front, yeah.
Recharge and for the site.
This is approved, already approved, but expired?
It was approved, it was approved in in two thousand and eleven.
He's made changes too, so he's made modifications, so.
But nothing was, well, well, they they knocked down one of the houses.
And Jack, you said there was a traffic uh study done on this?
Yes, they submitted it. I gave it to MDM and they're not ready yet.
Uh, did we get review comments?
No, we don't have anything from Jay, so.
No, Jeff's not ready either.
Have anything yet, so.
Nothing yet.
All right, so hopefully we continue to the next meeting and then hopefully Jeff will have all his uh review work done and then we can.
Imagine, especially if it's gonna be the ninth.
What's that?
If it's gonna be the ninth of January.
Yeah, he should be done by then. I mean, hopefully we can wrap this up at that point.
You're wrapping up without me because I'm retiring at the end of the year.
Are you really? Ah, come just for fun, Bob.
Retire after this is done.
Yeah.
One more for the Gipper.
Yeah, there you go.
It's always one more.
Yeah, it's always one more.
Harry, who you got stepping in for? There's big shoes to fill.
Heard this.
Bob Duff, Bob Duff's gonna take over. Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, I'm not anticipating any troubles. We just gotta make sure that the uh, that Jeff is.
Yep.
Blesses it.
Bill, there was one comment I wanted to make about uh this. I mean, we just had twenty three Cape in front of us. It's gonna obviously impact the intersection right near you. And you're gonna have an impact on the intersection. And you're gonna have an impact on the intersection. The common.
But there's gonna be, there's, there's gonna be mostly uh auto.
And passerby, as we call.
Yeah, drive-by.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be a lot of current traffic. That's it. Well, no, his uh, did, and it's funny because I was just reading an article about this. When you have this service uh businesses, like coffee shops, then those take on current traffic. People don't usually.
I'm gonna go here.
They're not destinations.
They're not destinations, right. Yeah, so they've taken uh.
My point is that MDM is reviewing both. They're gonna do it with the knowledge. They're both in front of them. And I don't know where we're gonna end up with either project. I don't know what mitigation there is with.
Yeah, I'm sure they'll figure that out.
When we get there, they'll figure it out, looking at them both.
And what the impact's gonna be.
Right.
And and you know what? There may, there may have to be some type of change made at that intersection. There may be contributions that may need to be.
That's a state's.
Well, no, they've one forty is. Have it out, have it.
At the corner.
Yeah.
They do anything, it'd be.
Oh, those, that's gonna be a state's.
Alright, that's what I got.
Yeah, so we'll see. I'm sure, I'm sure most of it is gonna be based on um twenty-three Cape.
Yeah.
It's um, so, but. Yeah, I me, I need a motion.
To continue the public hearing, special permit for one forty-seven Hartford Ave East.
Yes, sure.
January nine.
Is there a question? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Continue and still.
No, hold on.
Derek, first one fifty-three Hartford Avenue East. Uh, looking at the drawings, I still see outdated land ownership title names of uh property owners. Um, and there recall back in twenty-eleven, the, there was a car wash proposed, which was removed. At the time, no drive-through was allowed. I don't know if that's still.
I don't think it was requested at that time.
Well, they weren't, they weren't allowed in the mountain Mendon back then either.
We can have now, took that.
That's right.
If I may request the I guess it's the east side of the property going towards Bellingham, where I'm in the butter. Uh, it's possible to move that uh dumpster facility to the opposite side of the uh property, which is undeveloped currently, the former Slaven property. And I don't know what the sightline or the distances between the proposed propane tank structure and the uh mislabeled Merton residence. I recall there was an issue where it was too close to the physical dwelling. I don't know what the distance is.
These are dumpsters here. See, is there potentially any potential of moving those dumpsters, Bob?
Additional uh concession that was made in twenty-eleven was to add some arborvitae, not just to the corner of the Merton, former Merton property, but also extending up the uh property line along the stone wall. But I did not see that in the, the drawings.
So you want some arborvitae along? You you want some uh?
That can be conditionally granted for them.
Understood.
Yeah.
I just couldn't tell. I don't have a ruler. And also the distance from the radius of the exit, the second exit through the property line of the residential use property, from the Merton property. I believe that has to be a certain distance, more than ten feet. I I don't know what the distance is again.
We'll fi, we'll figure that out.
Thank you.
Bob, I'll send you this list tomorrow. That this gentleman brought up. Any of the others, who knows?
Bill, someone else.
Get another question out of there, Bill.
Oh, go ahead.
Jeff Iverson, one fifty-five. I mean, like you said before, they can, this, all the studies you want, but in reality, after putting in uh Caroline across the street, the accidents were already having, you know, with the almost directly across the street from them pulling out, whether they're already going down the street or not, is we can't pretend it's not an impact. It is. Half the time we're responding, half the time Hopedale's responding. So you may or may not even have current numbers of accidents that are going on directly in front of our homes. Um, as far as where it goes, and it says two residents to be torn down. I'm assuming one is the White House.
One of them's already been.
One of them's already been torn down. But between the intersection, which we can't pretend that this project and twenty-three is not going to be related. It is. And the traffic that you already have coming out of the industrial side, the Hopedale side, it's going to be a problem. So I think, you know, like you said, when you, you can, you can put out any piece of paper you want, but when it comes to reality.
Yeah, and unfortunately, we gotta do, we've gotta make uh attempts. The town has to show reasonable fortitude in making attempts to achieve that. Um, this gentleman, he owns a piece of property, he pays taxes on it. He has the rights just like everybody else. Uh, unless there's something duly outstanding that the town can say that he can't have it for this reason. The special permit allows us to take a look at it and make sure we're doing everything correctly, but it doesn't allow us to just say no. Okay, if 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 it doesn't say that, you know, there's gonna be an extreme, if if we can't find a traffic analyst to say it's gonna be an extreme hind hindrance to that intersection, it's pretty tough to say no.
But the state controls that intersection?
The state controls that intersection.
So they're not willing to make any changes?
Well, that's the, what we gotta see. I mean, I'm more concerned, to be honest with you, I that intersection deals much better with the uh, the auto traffic now than it did before, much better. Um, and uh, the truck traffic is a major problem. Truck, truck traffic is a major problem. But, I mean, I've had days where I've sat it, we're in front of uh old vines and within five minutes, I met the light. I mean, that used to never happen. It used to take forever to get through there. I mean, and and traffic moves steadily along now. I mean, that insect intersection is a great improvement. But truck traffic is a problem. I think that's why they originally didn't have that left turn lane, so the truck could swing. They put that left turn lane in. Now the truck's got nowhere to go.
No way.
Like, yeah. Yeah, that truck, truck traffic right-hand turn is gonna be a problem then.
And and I'll make sure MDM, our traffic engineer, looks at Caroline's and the accidents.
Cause they're crossing.
Yeah.
Two lanes.
Right.
That they can't be seen already.
Yeah, well, they're gonna wanna look at that configuration, you know, I bet.
Yeah, and it's, it's um it's, you know, the the bigger, biggest problem is when you're there, because it's kind of double-laned right there. And you're trying to take a left out of where Caroline's is. That's the problem because you've got two lanes of traffic you're crossing to take a left and and head towards Bellingham.
They shouldn't allow a left turn.
They shouldn't allow a left turn. That's the problem with that.
They come out with a left through the two lanes. They're trying to sneak by where you can't see. Now you're gonna have somebody punching on his parking lot to get out of the traffic at the lane.
What they should, what the Hope deal should have done, unfortunately, we don't own that. Hope deal should have done is not allow the left turn at that intersection.
Actually, they did both on eighty-five.
Yeah.
I think that's where you go into the reality versus paper.
The last two accidents I witnessed for my house were after the fact, but was a car traveling towards Bellingham, making a left on Charles Gate.
Oh, that too.
This person says, yeah, yeah, go ahead. And then the other person shoots around him because now there's partial second lanes.
They should eliminate that second lane. That was the worst idea, at least not beginning until after that.
That could be a conversation between Mendon and Hopedale.
Yeah, we could just, especially with that, the proposed industrial building going in over. Okay, that's gonna be a problem. But.
I think I've seen you two times.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, alright, um.
You made a motion.
Yeah, we we got a motion on the floor. We just spent a second. I'm sorry, gentlemen, but we're gonna move this to the next meeting as soon as that traffic report is done. We might, should have better answers for you at the next meeting. Alright, uh, all those in favor?
Aye. Oh, I got one more.
Got one more.
We, we got Bob one more time.
Yeah, listen to Bob one more time.
One more time.
Before he retires.
Yes. I figured that was gonna.
I seen you, Harry.
Yeah.
Yeah, Harry.
Bond reductions.
Yeah, one, one bond reduction, right? You only got one?
One release and one. Release, one reduction.
Gotta let Jimmy go. I've been this.
He doesn't bring any buddies anymore. He used to.
I know, he used to bring.
Pumpkin bread. It's pumpkin bread season. He used to.
We don't care about, we don't know anyone named COVID.
Hi, Jim.
Hi, Jim.
See you, Jim.
You too.
Um.
Make sure you're all here. Applewood is seeking a release of their bond since they, he's been accepted.
I'll tell them.
Um. Jack was just bringing up the fact that we'd like to hold a little back just until the the town approves it.
No, that's.
Applewood is all.
Oh, Applewood's all there, yeah. Yeah, we.
We're done.
Yeah, Applewood's accepted.
Yep, everything's all set, everything's all set with Applewood.
He's all set, I think he's all set.
Now I know.
Release two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars that we've been holding in Applewood Lane.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
He needs something in writing, so Jackie.
Yeah, Jack, you're gonna put together.
Yeah.
Something to release him that would just let us.
You get the numbers down, okay, Gal?
Yeah.
One street. You want, you wanna hold some back?
You wanna hold some back just, just until the town, the town accepts it and then we'll release everything.
Like to hold a hundred grand back?
It it's very. I don't think we need that much. It's already been cleared.
Five seventy-six.
Everybody's happy with. I was gonna hold twenty-five thousand.
But it never got to town meeting.
Oh, I don't care what we hold.
So now we got to.
If the case is legal or something.
Just in case something.
Twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, that's fine.
How much?
Twenty-five? You guys want fifty?
What do we, what do we?
I'm just concerned about legal, legal, if there, if there was a problem that arose.
We're gonna plow it again this winter, so.
In other words, towns is still gonna do title and everything on the road. If we ran into a problem that would provide money for legal.
I'd like to hold the money back anyways. A second.
Alright, seventy-five. That gives them a half a million back, right? It was five seventy-five, right?
Five hundred and seventy-six thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll hold seventy-five. They get five hundred and one thousand back.
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, hold on a minute.
Yes.
You guys.
I'm writing this.
Yeah, I can see him.
She's giving me the numbers tomorrow.
Okay, so how much?
Seventy-five thousand.
I go one.
Oh, you've gotta keep seventy-five.
Yeah, we're giving him back five. Alright, can I have a motion on that?
Already did.
We just did. Nice second, Dave.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, alright, now the last one. Oh, there's more?
No.
Second? Done?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
See you next year.
Uh, I want to talk to you for a minute.
Now, Jack.
Before you. No, um, we got a performance bond on Misco Springs. Jeff had done the E, I guess, this is.
Oh, they did, they sent the bond in? Yeah, okay.
Jack, did you uh, did you ask Jeff to do one for um Buddy Brooks?
I did ask him. I, I, I wanna talk to the, the board privately about that, but it's not done yet.
Okay, I'm gonna make sure it's gonna be done.
Okay.
If you can give me one minute with the.
Yep.
That's the journal.
Alright, Bob.
Are we closing?
You gotta adjourn, but Bill.